Good evening. Welcome to the January 4th, 2024. I want to make sure I got that right. 2024 Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission Meeting. I will call the meeting to order now. And with that, we're going to ask Mike to lead us in prayer and Amy with a pledge. If everyone would stand, please.
Let us pray. Dear Father, Lord, we just thank you for a beautiful day you've given us today. Father God, just welcome me in a new year. Father, I just ask you be with us as a commission tonight to do the town's business. Father God, just continue to watch over our city, all our city workers as they're out on the roads. Father, just keep them safe and protect them. Father, just go with us tonight. Father, let everything we do glorify you in Christ's name. Amen.
(inaudible)
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike and Amy. Our next item is citizens' comments.
No comments.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number four. Approval of the minutes of the December 7th, 2023 meeting. Counselor, are the meeting minutes in order?
They are in order.
Okay. Anything from the commission as far as your review of the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
One second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. We are now on to old business. The first item is annexation zoning and plan of service request. Joe Haddix, Bill France Road at Interstate 840, annexation in I-2, C-2, and R-3 zoning request.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After this packet was delivered and completed, that we did get a request to defer this again for 60 days.
Okay, and are you good with the deferral?
Yes.
Okay. We've been asked to defer this for 60 days. Any discussion? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve the deferral for Miranda and Amy. Was that a second?
Right.
A second from Amy. Further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this item for 60 days signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This item is deferred. Our next agenda item is site plans. Addition to Villages of Valley Green, Section 4, Enid Springs Road and West and Wildwood Drive, owner developer, JSD Holdings. And Kevin, there's an indication for a request to defer here as well.
Yes, they have. Sixty days, or sorry, 30 days, I'm sorry.
Thirty day deferral?
Thirty day deferral.
Okay. And is staff good with a 30 day deferral on this agenda item?
Yes, sure.
Okay. Okay, we have before us a 30 day deferral request for this agenda item. Any discussion on this?
I move to approve the deferral.
I have a motion to approve the 30 day deferral. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of deferring this item for 30 days, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This is deferred. We are now on to new business, a rezoning request from Kevin Gangeware, 9800 Florence Road, rezoning R-1 to PRD.
Yes, this is a rezoning request for about 13 acres on Florence Road. Addressed at 9800 Florence Road. It's currently zoned R-1, requested to be rezoned to a PRD. Surrounding zoning is RM in town and RM in Ruthford County. That RM zoning is surrounded on three sides. That's actually the property of the Corps of Engineers as part of the Percy Priest Lake reservoir properties. The land use plan would support low-density residential, which is up to three units per acre, on the east side of Florence Road in this area, and medium-density single-family, which is up to five units per acre on the west side of Florence Road in this area. Major thoroughfare plan does designate Florence Road as a minor arterial, so they would have to dedicate additional right-of-way with this project if approved. This request at PRD is for 54 single-family lots. We had a few comments. I'll go through, or raining comments regarding the fire flow. Minimum is 1,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. That was an informational comment for them. We had a comment regarding the building elevations, that anything fronting a road shall be considered the primary facade. We just wanted to clarify that. They have some information in their packet about those facades, but that anything, any elevation fronting a road shall be considered the primary facade and must meet those requirements. If it has more than one frontage or is visible from Florence Road, that would be applicable to all applicable elevations facing any of those roadways. Number seven, we made a comment, the phasing plan, there's kind of a two-phases plan. And so the, it would have created a situation where the fire code would have required a turnaround, and so they have shown a turnaround on both, both of those applicable locations. So you can remove comment seven. Number eight is just an informational comment regarding critical lots, and we would be identified at the preliminary class stage. There is some topo on this property. Not as bad as we've seen in some places, but there's still some topo that could create some issues. There is a TVA easement on the property. They are proposing some, no structures or anything like that, but there is some sidewalks and ponds and different things underneath that, and that does require documentation from TVA that they're okay with that before they get their grading permit. We'd ask them to show the distance from the stern line of Florence Road to the proposed property line to kind of show that right-of-way dedication. They have taken care of that. And then on comment 11, there's, the preliminary grading plan does show some, some pipes kind of leaving the right-of-way onto some of, to some of the yawning lots, and just added a note that that would require public drainage easements would be required on any of those pipes, so. And so they have addressed that as well. The, kind of the basic layout of the, it's a, again, surrounded on three sides by core property, so the, their, the access, only access is to Florence Road. There's really no properties to step into or anything like that. So it is just kind of that one access off Florence Road, and then the road loops around with the, the lots off of that. Potential would kind of be primarily in that southwestern corner of the property, kind of where that, again, where the TVA easement is located. One other issue I do want to point out, well, two things. One, we did look at it with them pretty closely as far as access and where to put that access, and we did, they did show it, enough distance from the Berrywood Drive and Orchard Valley Drive intersections there that we're comfortable with that location. And then the other, the sewer is not to this property currently, so they are going to have to run sewer about a little over 1,200 feet off-site. It's currently at, in the intersection there of Valley View Drive and Berrywood Drive, so they would have to actually run it from that, down from that area to get to, to serve this site, so. I think that's all that I've got.
Kevin, have we seen this property before?
I don't think the planning commission has seen this property before. We have had several different folks look at potentially developing this property, different, different things, but I don't think it's ever actually come to this group.
Yeah, for whatever reason, I seem to recall that there have been townhomes proposed here, and I'm not sure about apartments, but it seems like there was some multifamily development that's been proposed or talked about on several occasions. Is that correct?
Yes. There was one that was more of an apartment and kind of a mixture of uses, and then one, more than one occasion, I've had people talk to me about potentially coming forward with a townhome project that never, beyond talking to me, they never be, never went beyond that.
Yeah.
But there's definitely been folks interested in this property for a while for different things.
From a staff perspective and looking at the proposed 54 single-family lots, do you feel like the one entrance is sufficient?
Yeah. I think that's kind of the best, best you could really hope for with this location, because if you had more than one, you start to get too, again, potentially getting too close to the existing roads that are coming from the other direction and those kind of things, so.
And I heard you mention that staff worked with the developer here as far as identifying where you would like this to come in if it were to be approved.
Right, a minimum distance, yeah.
Okay.
And they, they hit that.
And then two phases, that's the reason for the, I was going to call them cul-de-sacs or roundabouts?
Yeah, the temporary cul-de-sacs.
So no issues as far as fire in and out there?
Right, with those cul-de-sacs, we should be good.
Okay, all right. That's all I had from my review. Other questions or discussion from the commission?
The sewage line off of, what is that, Ork Valley, that's already been approved?
It has not been approved. It's, it's, as far as, I mean, they would have to go through the process, the construction documents and those kind of things, so. Our utilities department has looked at it and, and feels, it appears like, you know, everything will work for it, but they haven't seen the actual, you know, actual construction plans. They wouldn't do that until the, if this is approved, then they would submit those plans to us with the plan, the preliminary plan.
Kevin, providing the sewer was in fact supplied, most, if not all, of Deer, not Deer, what am I thinking of, the subdivision, Lake Farm?
Lake Farm.
They currently are on Septics, correct?
That's correct.
If in the event those begin to fail, at some point, they all do, but in the event they begin to fail, would this sewer line capacitate adding anything from Lake Farm into it?
I think from a capacity standpoint, I don't think it'd be an issue, because it's an eight-inch line, and so I don't think that would be an issue at all. I think we'd have to, I'd have to defer to the designer and, and our utilities department as far as how deep it is and that sort of thing to make it where it could be for each house, it would work for each house and that sort of thing.
But not a major concern as you see it?
Right.
What are the lot sizes here?
Um, there is a minimum on, the, the minimum kind of, they range from just under 6,000 to a little over 10,000. It's kind of their range. Standard of 52 wide by 110 deep is kind of their standard dimension.
Not anything like an R-3 that we would normally have in that area?
No, there's no, they're not 10,000 square foot lots, no. This is about a little over four units per acre is the density on this. So it's, it's a little higher than an R-3 density, probably more similar to like, not quite an R-4, but kind of in between those two as far as the number of units.
How does staff feel about that kind of zoning surrounded by much different zoning?
We, we're okay with, with the type of the zoning and the density. I think it's, it's kind of, it's a little more than what's there certainly, but it's, it's pretty consistent with what our land use plan is for that area. Kind of right in that, right, in that, kind of in between the two, but pretty close.
Minimum square footage, it looks like it was 1,800?
1,800 to 3,000 was the range, yes.
And I never like to tell anybody what they should build. They know the market better than we do, but I saw that here, and I just thought it should be noted that that's their plan. Other questions or discussion?
I'll note the developer is here if you have any questions to them as well.
Does the commission have any questions for the developer? One moment, we may not have any questions. When would the traffic study be done?
We typically wouldn't require a traffic study. This is not really large.
I mean, I know this is just a zoning, correct?
Yeah.
Right.
This one's not quite large enough for you?
Because it just doesn't have the amount of lots.
Yeah, it wouldn't really trigger one.
So it'd be up to, going forward, be up to this body and then the rest of the body to
Right.
make any suggestions towards that.
I guess I have a question for the developer.
Okay.
I, I had a similar thought about the size of the units. You know, this is a really unique property, abutting the Army Corps and, and Stones River. Was there any consideration given to more premium housing on this site? This seems like the perfect location for it.
Let's, let's, we'll, we'll get there, and if I could have one or both of you come up, and whoever wants to speak, or if you both think you will, if you could give me your name and address, and then we'll let you address Charles's question.
Sir, I am Kevin Gangware with Civil Site Design Group, the engineer for the project. Pleased to answer any questions. Rick Blackburn is with me. He's the developer on the project.
Okay. Who wants to answer Charles's question then?
Premium, right? Sure, if you like it.
We got another one.
Sure.
Yes, we're going to, we're going to get your name and address, too.
Absolutely. I'm Gary Wyszyneski, addresses 6064 Central Pike, Mont Juliet.
Okay. Did you, did you hear the question?
Absolutely.
All right, go ahead.
So the design that we're looking at on this property of the housing is a family-friendly neighborhood to where we want to serve a move-up buyer. So after their first home, they're looking for a little more room, they're looking for a little more design, they're looking for a little more amenities. So everything that'll be here will all be masonry, fronts and sides, on the corners as far as brick, stone, and hardy, predominantly on the fronts, brick and stone, hardy on the sides and rare. We're looking for all of them to probably be more of a, let's call it a, not so much a coastal look, but where you have front porches, both on the first floor and the second floor, in order to make the house very usable for a family. So, so that was our intent with this property, other than other properties we've done, which were a moved-down product, which would just be a single-level, more luxury product. So we wanted to have this be a more family-friendly community. And with our current economic environment and looking at rates and payments, 1,800 minimum up to 3,000 puts us in that bailiwick of where it's affordable for folks moving up.
You mentioned amenities, so while you're here, let's go ahead and talk about the amenities that, that you're proposing. I noticed some in the, the plans, if you could just go into a little more detail and...
Sure, absolutely. So on the amenities, we'll make sure that the entire site is walkable. We want to do our amenity area in the little teardrop that you see in the middle. So we'll go ahead and do a gazebo in there, we'll do a little family-friendly play park, some picnic benches, and, and walking trails. So once again, we want this to be more of a family-friendly outdoors. You're going to see kids out playing. That's, that's the concept we're going with.
Okay. Anything else from the commission? Carry that teardrop in the middle?
Yes, sir.
Is there just that one 10-foot easement access into there?
Hold on, let me get my glasses here, Mark.
Yeah, there is just that one access point.
Yeah, so we, we've got the access that's coming in between lots number 38 and 54. With, as you can see, you've actually got a walking park all the way around the entire bubble. If need be, we could always squeeze an access on the far end, but, you know, if that's something that the commission wanted.
I'm sorry, I might have misread that. Is that, is that a 10-foot access easement through those lots, or is that a 10-foot width of your walking trail?
No, that's access.
Okay. How long, how wide would your walking trail be?
Normally, we'll pave it at five feet, because we can still get a paving machine at, at a five-foot width. Other than that, it goes to a 20. So depending on cost of asphalt and oil at that time, it'll be hard surface. It'll either be paved asphalt or concrete.
Provided, provided that this were to move forward, provided it would, when do you foresee actual building taking place? What's your timeline, I guess is my question?
Okay, so before I can answer that, with the process here through Smyrna, right, I believe we're on the agenda possibly for next week, Tuesday with the commission. And then we'd have to get our CDs, that's going to be what, a six-month process?
Yeah, to get through approvals.
I would see actually moving dirt late fourth quarter of this year or first of next year.
The only reason I ask that question is because you made a pointed fact about today's economic
Agreed.
picture.
Agreed.
And if we're looking at a year from now, it might be different.
Yes.
So to Charles's question, could that change? Could you see a higher-end product along that Stones River side?
So, so the answer is yes.
I know the lot sizes currently might not.
Understand. So the thing is, as far as a higher-end product, we believe in delivering a higher-end product, maybe not just because of the size of the product, but the amenities of the product. So in many of our communities, what we're seeing, not only with the move-ups, but with folks that are moving down, they don't want a big house. They want what they want in the house. So the price per square foot goes way up, because the fits and finishes, interior and exterior, are executive finishes. But as far as, you know, to be honest with you, we don't have much of a call anymore at all, Mark, for anything over 3,000 feet. So what we don't want to do is put product out there that the consumer really
I don't disagree with that.
It doesn't have an appetite for.
I don't disagree with that. Floor plan layout and amenities are most important. If I'm not mistaken, and there's a roadway that runs behind this property, is that correct? Is that west of it?
There's the access to the boat ramp, yes, sir.
Right, so there's a road between this property and access to the river.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I'm sorry, go ahead, Mark.
No, I didn't have any. I, I realize this is just a zoning request, but I think it's fair to find out. Sure, absolutely. I'll think a bit more about what we may see come. Understand?
Anything else for any of these gentlemen? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Okay, we've heard from the developers here. Are there any other questions you might have of staff or anything else that we want to discuss?
Not at this point for me.
I'm sorry?
Not at this point for me.
Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments from Charles. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Amy. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. We are now on to our next item, agenda item 6B, site plan. Our first site plan we'll look at will be for Legends of Smyrna, Lot 4A, Almaville Road, owner, developer, Fleeman Living Trust, Greg Patel.
This is a site plan for a 12,375 square foot multi-tenant retail facility, vacant lot on Almaville Road. The property is proposed for development is located south of Legend Steakhouse and across from the intersection of Almaville Road and Quill Ridge Road. A single access point is proposed off of Almaville Road across from Quill Ridge Road, so the two points intersection would line up across the street from each other. There are three restaurants that are proposed as part of this development. You have one in the middle and then two on either ends of the building, and the restaurant on the southern end of this development would have a drive-through, and the other two restaurants would just be more or less walk-in only. So square footage for the site, just over one acre, and that does require 4,412 square feet of open space landscaping. Alpkin is proposing for 4,750 square feet. Parking required of 92 spaces, and they're showing for 97, and that does require four handicap spaces, which they are showing. The landscape plan shows red maple trees along Almaville Road with a variety of shrubs planted between the, between those street trees. Strawberry is also shown at the base of the front of the building and around the dumpster enclosure. Trees are shown within landscape islands around the parking lot area. The architectural elevations submitted show all four elevations consisting of primary materials, which do include two different colors of brick and a stone with glass and glazing. As presented, these elevations would meet the design review requirements. Senator comments one through five would all remain at this time. Most of the staff comments here are informational in nature, so comment one, we originally had that the fire flow was going to be north of 2,000 gallons per minute at 20 PSI. Comment number six, a little, a little bit here, they, there was a firewall that was requested be added. In doing so, with adding that firewall, they could reduce the fire flow requirement, so the Alpkin has added that firewall into the building design, so that has in turn reduced the fire flow to what we're normally used to seeing with that 1,500 gallons per minute requirement. So that 2,215 gallons per minute has been reduced down to 1,500 gallons per minute, but will remain as it is more an informational comment. Comment two is regarding, similar to the other retail facilities we see in this area with what staff thinks to be not enough dumpster enclosure for the entire facility. So if additional dumpsters are required in the future, we will require that the enclosure be expanded and constructed of a similar material as what is shown on the plans. Comment number three is regard to the possibility of future center turn lane on Almaville Road may be removed. At that time, the access to the site would become a right-in-out only, so that is a similar comment to the development we had across Almaville Road, I believe, a month or two ago. Comment number four, we asked about the park requirement, really, for, based on what the ordinance requires at this time, so they're essentially have the maximum square footage for restaurant spaces at three tenants as designed at this time. So if any future restaurants would like to go in here, basically, they wouldn't be allowed. We only allow retail beyond those three restaurants that are currently shown. Any more restaurants would be exceeding our requirements for parking. So three restaurant spaces are limited at that 7,000 square foot threshold. Comment number five was regarding the exit to the site and their drive-through pavement markings. That has been addressed and can be removed. Comment number six goes back to the first staff comment regarding the firewall that has been addressed and can be removed as well. Comment number seven, about the stormwater detention for the site, they were using some previous pavers on-site, so that is something that will be reviewed by Public Works when it gets to that stage, and they'll deem if that is acceptable or not for the way the site is designed. So that comment will remain as, is more so informational at this time. Comments eight, nine, 10, 11 are all CUD comments, as this does lie within CUD's service area. This is the side of the road which CUD does have apparently adequate fire supplies, so shouldn't be much of an issue as compared to that previous site across the street on Almaville. But with that, staff recommend approval with the above list of comments.
Questions for Mitchell?
Mitchell, do y'all feel okay with just two dumpsters for seven spaces? I mean, that's...
We made the comment, and that we don't feel it is, that was their response to, they will, it's no add to the site plan that if they are required in the future, if they need it, then they'll certainly have to do it.
Is there, and, and there adequate spot on the plans to do that?
They could certainly expand the dumpster enclosure, because they are currently in excess of what is required for parking, so certainly there's space for them to lose a space or two even, and still meet our ordinance requirements if they chose to do that.
So the dumpsters right now are on the back corner of the property?
Correct.
These opposite end of the building, that corner is empty as well, correct?
Yes, currently, yeah.
Okay.
So they could, they could add some there if they had to.
I, I would like to see that added now. It was, it's going to be harder to do it later on, I think. That way, you divide those dumpsters up between those tenants, some on each end of the building, so your tenants on one end aren't going through the parking lot. And if they'd get them, get them rented and, and in there, then you're having to do
That's just looking at it.
Okay, let's make sure we note that. Okay.
Anything in here that T-Dot has to look at?
They'll have to get a T-Dot access permit, but I think that'd be
Missing it, or is that part of?
Well, they'll have to, that's standard procedure, though, since it's a state highway, they'll have to do that.
Yeah, that's why I was asking.
Okay, any, anything else?
We've talked about the center lane, I know that Charles has brought that up before. We've talked about that center lane. You know, I just want to throw this thought or this question out there, I guess, as much as anything. If there's a center lane added there in the future, is this in proximity to where people begin to merge into the Ammival Road lane, coming around that curve? I mean, it comes, is that anywhere near that, this?
No.
It's on the other, it's on this side of Legends, right?
It's, I think you got with, you have the shopping center and the car wash and all that, I think you got enough room.
But that one lane begins to end.
It does, yeah.
So, is staff comfortable with its location and its ingress egress, with the thought that that lane begins to end?
Yeah, we're, there's still several hundred feet before that lane starts to drop out. We're okay with that.
No need for a turn lane, in your opinion, then?
Well, you already got the center turn lane, it would be a left turn lane into the site. I don't know, the only thing, we have to give a T-Dot, they think, feel like there's a need for a right-turn decel lane into this side or not, that's something we have to
Be coming from the interstate, and this is on the right side.
Right. I mean, I guess that's something we can, we can, I'll give it to Charles.
If you would just look at that, especially with that lane decel there, going over into the one-mile-lane lane, if you will. That's all I had, Charlie.
Okay. Someone here representing the developer, come up, give us your name and address. I think I'm going to know your name, but let's get you on record.
Chris McGuire with Hudson Steel Engineering. I appreciate y'all's time. Mike, I guess to answer the first comment that had came up about the dumpsters, I'd be happy to add a third one on the northwest side. I misunderstood the comment, I thought it was just an informational comment that kind of covered us all if something was needed in the future. The only issue with adding on the southwest side is that's actually, that square in that bottom-left corner is a CUD vault, and it's for a big twelve-inch line, I'm assuming going to the big building to the west of us. And that's, the dot, that dashed line around it is their easements, so we can't put an enclosure in that area, we're actually largely just trying to stay out of it.
Right.
But if you would like us to add a third one in the northwest corner, I'd be happy to do that. And then, as far as the entrance for a T-Dot comment, we will have to get a T-Dot entrance permit, and in talking with Stanley Summoners with T-Dot, if him or Charles King feel we need to do a traffic analysis or need to add that, we'll abide by
I don't perceive you will or won't, but I think
We'll abide by their requirements.
While we're talking about it, it's something we should take a look at, just to make sure.
I completely agree, and we'll work with staff and with T-Dot to determine whether they feel it's warranted. I'm happy to answer any other questions, if anyone has any.
I don't know if you can answer this or not, I'm just, I'll ask it.
Yes.
Do we know who any of these restaurants are as of yet, or is this, it's all proposed, right?
At this time, as far as, as far as I know, it's all speculative.
Okay. And because there's three restaurants, I think it's a fair comment Mike made about dumpster control. I just want to make sure we have adequate parking, that's the main thing. With three restaurants in a plaza, I just want to make sure we have adequate parking.
Yeah, and we're okay with eliminating it to that, the square footage they've got shown, and no more, I think we'll be fine.
So, that, if this were to be approved, it would be approved with the proposed restaurant square footage, and
Right.
No more.
Right.
So, they couldn't take one of the retail places aside of and expand it, expand the restaurant into a retail place?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, they can't exceed what's
What's currently there.
Yeah.
Right.
Now, one of those restaurants might become retail if
Which might be fine, yes.
Because it can go backwards, but
Yeah.
It can't go over, right? Yeah.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're not tying them to those three locations, it's really just a building square footage within the building.
And with that square footage, staff is comfortable with parking?
Yes.
Because I'm with Mark, that's something I want to get right on the front end, should there be three restaurants?
Right.
One with a drive-through.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I would assume that's the one, which one is it?
That's one on the south side.
South side?
Yeah.
On the way out?
When I was looking at it
So, they'll circle the whole parking lot?
It doesn't appear there'd be a stacking issue.
Not a stacking issue, no.
But more of a, yeah.
But driving through the parking lot?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Typically, in the back of the buildings like that, that's where your employees park anyway, so there may not be a lot of people going around other than going through the drive-through.
Okay.
And with those square footages, it'll likely be a smaller type restaurant, like a Subway, or a Little Caesar's, or something like that. It probably wouldn't be a high-traffic generator like Legends.
So, one that wouldn't be a traditional dine-in, one that would be more for a take-out, which
Fester.
And maybe not impact parking as much.
Yeah, a lot more turnover in the parking that way, you know, because people aren't sitting there for an hour eating dinner, or whatever.
Well, I don't think we're going to see a Chick-fil-A come in there, but, but if we did, can you imagine the mess?
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
That'd be an entire Chick-fil-A there.
Yeah. Okay. Well, the chickens will certainly be happy to know that, so. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I think we've discussed, we've asked questions. Is there anything else that the commission would like to ask or discuss concerning this project? And if not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve with staff comments.
Okay, and
Adding, adding the dumpster.
And adding a dumpster.
Okay. So, that would be a third dumpster, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion from Miranda to approve with staff comments to include a third dumpster. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and second. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion is approved. Okay, we are now on to the courtyards at Stewart's Creek amenity area, Rocky Ford, Ammival Road. Owner, developer, EFCOM Communities.
This is the amenity center plan for the Stewart's Creek subdivision, would be located near the front of the development off of Rocky Ford, Ammival Road. As part of this amenity area, they are showing for a community-building poolhouse, pool, playground, mail kiosk, pickleball court, and a bocce ball court. The square footage for, of the vehicular use area for the site, six-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two square feet, which does require six-hundred-and-forty-three square feet of landscaping, and they're showing for six-thousand-seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet. Total parking, they're showing for nineteen spaces, and that does require one handicap parking space, which, and they're showing for two. The landscape plan shows a type-C landscape buffer along Rocky Ford, Ammival Road, with shrubbery planted around the perimeter of the clubhouse. Visional trees are shown in landscape islands within the parking area. Architectural elevations for the amenity area show a primary material of fiberglass panels with a layer of stacked stone near the base of the building. The building is to match the approved materials for the single-family homes within this development to provide a consistent appearance throughout the subdivision. Standard comments one through five all to remain, and then, staff comment one, we asked them to provide streetscaping along Road D, which is the main road coming in on Rocky Ford, Ammival Road, between the parking lot and the road, meeting, to meet design review requirements, because they are not currently showing any streetscaping along that area. Comment two, we asked them to label all the road names and to provide road name approval for those road names. Comment three, the minimum fire flow for the site is fifteen-hundred gallons per minute at twenty PSI. If the building is sprinkled, it would then be reduced down to one-thousand gallons per minute at twenty PSI. Comment four, the building is required to be sprinkled, so it kind of goes along with previous comment. Comment five, the FDC must be thirty-foot from the building, and fire hydrants must be within one-hundred feet of the FDC. Comment six has been addressed, we asked them to connect the clubhouse pool sidewalk to the sidewalk along Road D, so comment six can be removed. Comment seven, more an informational comment, but the final plat for this section of the subdivision must be recorded prior to issuance of a building permit. Comment eight was regarding the landscaping, so they're showing a type-C landscape buffer, which is what you traditionally see between, say, residential and commercial. They're using that for streetscaping, so that does not meet design review requirements. So, we need them to revise that buffer along Rocky Ford, Ammival, and Road D to meet design review requirements for streetscaping. Comment number nine, they had a discrepancy as far as the number of parking spaces shown in the site data table, that has been addressed, so that can be removed. Comment number ten, the, they were showing landscaping within the drainage structure area, and we can't have landscaping and drainage structures overlap each other, reduce efficiency as far as drainage is concerned, so we need them to shift landscaping outside of those drainage areas, and that comment will remain as well. And then, comment number eleven and twelve are CUDs, as this is within CUD service area, and those will remain. So, comments number six and nine have been addressed, the rest will remain. More so, a lot of these comments are minor in nature, and should, in theory, be relatively easy to address for the developer and applicant to fix, in compliance. So, with that, staff recommends approval with those remaining comments.
Questions for Mitchell on this? Sounds like we've been satisfied with what the explanation, so I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, do I have a second?
Second.
A second?
Motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This motion's approved. Okay, that should take us to the January bond review report.
That is correct. I have several tonight, so I'll try to go through these. The first one, Point subdivision, that's the commercial development, commercial and multifamily development there along San Merrily Parkway. Still some items to be done there, we've had that one a couple of years now. They have not built anything on any of the lots yet, they have started work on one of the multifamily developments, they started moving some dirt, but have not, nothing's been built there yet, so they did request to be extended, and we would recommend a six-month extension there. Cedar Hills, Section Three, Phase One, they have finished the topping, and so we can begin the maintenance period, so we can reduce that one, extend it one year as their maintenance bond. Buckingham, Section Two, Phase Two, that one is built out. They are working on those and trying to get those finished up, they are not, at least as, a couple of weeks ago, they weren't completed yet. We would be able, if they are able to get that finished by their expiration date, which on that one is not till February fourth, we could reduce, reduce that and extend it as their maintenance bond, but otherwise, just extend it three months at the current amount. Woodcrest, Section Four is kind of in the same boat, and so, we'd make the same recommendations on that one, the same developer as well. The, the next one, the Echo Site Two LLC, that's, that is a bond that was required by our Board of Zoning Appeals, because they had to pave the drive to the cell tower. They have, they are planning to pave that this week, they said, so if they're able to get that done, we could re-release that, otherwise, we would need to extend that to the spring to give them time to finish that up. Hunter's Point Annex, Section Three, Phase One, this is actually the end of their maintenance period, they had a couple cleanup items there, if they're able to get those done, we could release that, once they get those two items cleaned up. And that's an escrow account, so we can release it at any time. Cedar Hills, Section Two, Phase One, this is the end of that maintenance period, so we can release that one. And then, Buckingham, Section Two, Phase One, again, this is the end of that maintenance period there. I think, just a couple cleanup items, if those get done, we can release that one as well, once they're completed, otherwise, we would need to keep it for three more months. That's all I've got.
Okay, any questions for Kevin for the January bond review report?
I move to approve the January bond review report.
I have a motion to approve the January bond review report, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, and further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The bond review report is approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything tonight.
Charles?
No, sir.
You were quiet tonight.
I don't.
Kevin?
Sir.
Wow, Mitchell, you spoke.
I'm sorry I didn't come with my bocce ball.
I want a full report on that.
I will leave you with a question.
Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Counselor?
Nothing from me.
Anything from the commission? We stand adjourned.